Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Shifrin. And I will call the meeting to order for November 4, 2024, 6:30 of the Planning Board. And right now, everybody's here, but I'll still have a vote called this. Carol Hawes is present.
Lance McNally present.
Mike Conchik present.
Andrew Shepherd present.
Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Let's thank our veterans and our current military.
Do we want to make Patrick?
That comes up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, let's thank our veterans and our current military, as well as all of our first responders. Um, I don't know where we'd be without you, especially in this town. And thank you, Patrick, for your service. The meeting is being recorded and will be uploaded to Townsend YouTube channel. 1.4 Chairman's additions or deletions at this point in time. Uh, Robert has told us that he won't be present, so I'd like to appoint Patrick to a voting seat. Also, 1.5, the minutes are not ready for October 21st, and I'd like to move that to the next meeting. Everybody's okay?
Yes.
All right. 1.6 Administrative Report. Beth?
Well, it is a lengthy report. I don't know if I want me to read the whole thing, or if the board wants to read it on their own. Um, pardon your updates.
Yeah, would you please read it? Thank you. And if there are any questions, please just during the report, okay? Because we have time.
Okay, uh, Planning Board Dental Department Administration Report. Um, Section 1, Applications, Anticipated Applications. Uh, 1 Vito Street Extension. That is, uh, the hearing was continued to November 18th, 2024 at 6:45 PM. The ZBA hearing on that project is Wednesday night, uh, November 6th. 18 Main Street. Um, we have a stormwater management technical peer review in process and expect the findings letter from the stormwater consultant prior to the November 18th Planning Board meeting. 249 Main Street, um, and 18 Main Street, of course, is on your agenda tonight for the Site Plan Review Special Permit. 249 Main Street, the application for Site Plan Review Special Permit is on your agenda tonight. Um, 108, 110, 112 West Meadow Road. Request for certificate of completion is also on your agenda tonight. Um, the staff inspections are complete. The ASBIL and monthly inspection reports have been received. Um, 22 Main Street, um, as you know, the Planning Board has received the application for modification of a special permit, and the hearing is also tonight. 108 Pittsburgh Road, uh, still need to record their stormwater management system operation and maintenance plan. I'm just carrying that along in the reports until it's done. Site visits and compliance, uh, cattle farm, open space, uh, conservation development. Uh, the last residential dwelling is still under construction, so the certificate for compliance request is ongoing. Um, all permits are in compliance with their SMA construction phase inspection reports, except for 66 Flaver and Hill and Park Turnpike. Three Wheeler Road Permit expires December 12th, 2024, and a friendly reminder to renew this permit was sent to the permit holder. Miscellaneous, the Land Use Department is currently in transition due to two vacant staff positions, the Land Use Coordinator and Conservation Agent. We appreciate everyone's patience and understanding during this period. New flood maps in the National Water Fund is ongoing. Staff is working on amending the Bloodplain District Bylaw to remain with standing to participate in IP for spring ATM 2025. Master Plan Implementation is ongoing. Same with the Hazard Mitigation Plan, uh, with a special note that, um, an update for the Hazard Mitigation Plan and the MVP Plan is going to be due next year. Uh, so I just recommend that we strategize the plan update to stay current with their eligibility for state and federal grants. So the ADU accessory department bylaw 14536 will need to be drafted slash amended to fit state guidelines if and when they are published. Um, MRPC are waiting to do this with a DLTA grant. Town Council recommends waiting until spring to draft bylaw changes. Site Plan Approval, they're awaiting a planning award grant for MRPC to create this new bylaw for non-discretionary use. Through the grant, they will also then amend 14242 Site Plan Review Special Permit and all other reference for out zoning bylaw to remove slash modify where there is misinformation about type of site plan review. Um, MTA Communities. Submitted for the Pre-Adoption Review by EOHLC went in on October 15th. This included bylaw language, district boundary map, PDF, and GIS files, and a compliance model. Town Council review was requested of the initial materials on October 7th, and an opinion on whether we should submit for AG review prior to adoption at town meeting. So we're awaiting response from Town Council and from EOHLC. This will need to go through, um, to 2025 ATM through the Planning Board. Adoption of the bylaw is critical. Official zoning maps, uh, we have five hours of GIS time from MRPC remaining in, uh, calendar year 2024 and 12 hours in calendar year 2025. MRPC has indicated they can assist the town in getting the current unofficial zoning map finalized to propose for adoption at 2025 ATM. As you know, the Planning Board supports this endeavor. The new map will need to replace the current official maps, um, which are archaic, uh, with a larger one to include the six zoning districts and three overlay districts expected MTA. Request was made to MRPC on October 22nd. Um, bylaw language will need to be updated as applicable as well. Recommend having a felony zoning map made to include the historic district properties. Open Space and Recreation Plan, yay! Working with MRPC and Chair of Open Space Committee, Carol Hawes, to finalize adding in a couple more tables and the action table priorities to put back into the final report. The grant writer needs to finalize the ADA self-evaluation and insert the appendix act. Once ready, submit, will submit final report back to Melissa Ryan at EEA, and we currently have conditional approval. Um, and we need to receive for a final approval letter before the end of the, uh, grant. That's, uh, that's still going on. UPWP Corridor Study, the corridor analysis spearheaded by MRPC to do a safety study along Route 119 from Edward Road, Past High School, and the Proctor Road. MRPC, uh, update is going to start data collection, um, beginning this fall slash winter. And, uh, the typical notes about the Planning Board membership report resource folder and the Townsend-Fritschburg commuter shuttle, which is still running. Um, all services on demand only, and writers must focus day in advance to pick up from both shuttle stops in Town Hall or Pittsburgh and rural. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the board? Okay, I just wondered if you could give us an update, um, on, whether the job postings were done.
Uh, internally, internally, yes. I can say internally, yes.
Okay.
For both.
For both.
The vacancy, yeah.
Okay. So was there any indication of when it would be external?
Um, yeah, I think it, um, I think it's going to be in 10 days. So like around, uh, the 13th of November or something.
The hosting for 10 days?
I think it posts internally for 10 days.
Oh.
And then goes to the public.
Oh.
Yeah, my guess.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Okay, so we still have two minutes before 6:45. So... Do you think we could take up 3.1? Do you think we could get through 3.1 on the work session? It's review and discuss request certificate of completion for stormwater management permit on 108 to 112 West Meadow.
Yeah.
Do you want to, um, give the background for that?
Oh, yeah, um, so I put everything in folders. But basically, um, the stormwater management system was inspected by both the Highway Supervisor and myself on two different occasions. I inspected the site, um, after a half-inch rainfall, um, the day after, and I provided the board with photographs, so, um, I, when you can, um, let's pull up, uh, let me allow me to pull up the comment. There was only one comment to consider from the Highway Department after his inspection, and if you will allow. The ASBIL plans have been submitted, um, the operation and maintenance agreement has been updated, um, Mr. Kimble's here tonight. Thank you for coming. He's the owner of 108, as you recall, there was a lot of, um, working together on that, yeah, um, between the owners.
My question was, when was the, when was the inspection date after the half-inch?
After the rainfall?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, then it was the morning. It was out there bright and early.
Okay, was there any issues?
Um, yeah, a little bit, yes, at the time. Because there was still areas that were not fully covered with grass at that point.
Okay.
Which I was also trying to take care of.
What was that date, though?
Oh, crap.
Oh, right.
Are we September?
Oh, September.
That was, um, looking if I have that here.
Does the grass fill then?
Taking a minute.
Does the grass fill then?
Yes, it does, or much better than it was, yes.
I have September 27th on my report.
September 27th?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that, that sounds lovely.
Okay. Because we had a ton of rain in August, so...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but, but that was not when any of the stuff was done?
No. Um, that was, I, because of the rain in August was the reason that I started to fill in certain areas that there were rills that were coming from the middle of the yard going to the back. And the mound we're going down to where the storm garden is between 108 and 110, um, I was concerned about that, so I was taking care of that. Um, the last time that they worked on the project in terms of improving the storm garden, I'm pretty sure worked pretty favorably. We didn't, it wasn't, uh, full blowout like it was in earlier months.
So when?
So it was better.
So after that, after they did that?
Right.
Was the half-inch storm that you looked at after that? Or they did some more after?
Before, um, you know, it came by.
Okay.
So...
Came by that.
Yeah, and what I would say is, is that they worked pretty well. Um, the one behind the house did fill with water, and, but by the next day, it had subsided, and there was no water in it. So I thought that was pretty good.
Okay.
And there was no break in regards to the walls were already done.
Okay.
The one over in 108 and 110, did do. Um, the only thing I would say is, is that the storm garden itself at that time worked fine, except the water was finding a, a new path that was going outside of the, the rain garden.
Okay.
So, and that was before there was actually grass that was filling in in regards to going down the slope.
Okay, so now we're at 6:45.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, we'll continue, um, after with the, the question being?
I have a, just have one from the Highway Superintendent.
What was that?
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah.
Okay, so it says, um, his, that is, everything looks as it should. Um, any and all, um, I'm sorry, and I have to, I have to go ahead and now I'm saying, I can't, I can't read this writing. I'll, oh, and, um, straw waddles and silt fence should be removed. I recommend installing stone riprap at the left corner of the driveway as you are facing, um...
The house.
The, the house, thank you. This will help with erosion. Okay, so do you understand what he's talking about?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
And so what was that date of his comment?
He was more...
10/28.
Yeah, 10/28, he was out.
Oh.
The Highway Superintendent.
Okay, and has that been given to, um, the contractor?
It has not. If this is for the board, um, it hasn't been forwarded to the, um...
Okay, we'll continue after.
Okay.
This, um...
I'll try not to speak over my mind. Sorry.
I have to do this. Um, okay, I'd like to call, uh, the public hearing now at 6:46 PM for 18 Main Harbor Village Mall. Application Site Plan Review Special Permit to Stormwater Management Permit Application. Open with the board members, please introduce yourselves.
Carol Hawes.
Lance McNally.
Mike Conchik.
Andrew Shepherd.
And Laura Shifrin. In accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 40A and Townsend Zoning Bylaw, Section 145-42 Site Plan Review Special Permit and Section 145-65 Special Permits, Townsend General Bylaw, Chapter 85 NPDES Phase 2 Stormwater Management and Chapter 175 Article 5 Stormwater Regulations. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 4th, 2024 at 6:45 PM in the Selectment Chambers in Memorial Hall. That's, and, um, to review an application received from Alicia C. Wisconsin Key Point Partners regarding a proposal to redevelop the existing standalone bank into a Starbucks with a drive-through. The parking lot and associated grassed islands will be reconfigured to accommodate a new entrance location and anticipated drive-through fee. Lengths located at 18 Main Street. And then the map outlining commercial district in the Aquifer Protection Overlay District. A stormwater management permit is requested for the conversion of the, of existing vacant bank in Harbor Village Mall into proposed Starbucks with associated parking lot modifications involving grand disturbance. Interested parties can express their support or opposition during the hearing or submit written comments beforehand. Copies of the application are available for review at Town Hall during regular business hours or via email. Interested parties are encouraged to attend respectfully submitted Laura Shifrin Chair, Townsend Planning Board. Now, the applicant. Would you like to make your presentation, please?
Sure, I am Alicia C. Discolani, uh, from Key Point Partners, and we represent FDVQ and now 004, who is the owner of, um, our client has been the owner, uh, since 2018. Um, and we are pleased to present in front of you a potential user for the former Santander Bank and that Starbucks. With Steve, Steve, with me and Steve Boacki, uh, from Audi Hall, who's our signature. So, um, see, we're not here. Um, so what we're proposing, um, is this is the initial renderings and evaluations for this Santander Bank. We are keeping the structure, so there's no change to the footprint. Um, so the existing Santander Bank had a drive-through. Um, so what we're proposing is a, an ex, full exterior, uh, facelift to the building. Um, so the Starbucks, um, square footage is about 2,500 square feet. Uh, we're proposing 66 seats, um, and that's a combination of interior and exterior. Um, what we're creating, what Starbucks would like to create is, um, an area for outdoor seating. Um, and that would be for the spring and summer months. And then the chairs will go away, depending upon our weather, uh, the chairs will go away in the winter season. Um, we have created a, okay. Um, so what we're proposing is to use the existing drive-through that Santander had, uh, but we're creating a new drive-through, which would accommodate approximately 12 cars. Um, is what Starbucks feels that that is the sufficient queue line for this Starbucks location in this area. So as you can see here, um, we've created a outdoor seating area. Um, this is where the trash comp closure is, this is 119 here. Um, but we're taking the opportunity to, and one of the reasons why we're here, um, to realign this parking here, which we believe is a benefit for the center. This parking area here between Hannaford and the old Santander Bank um, was, uh, not an afterthought, but it wasn't, it was a parking lot configuration that was left out by itself. Um, so we're taking the time here to make some improvements here to better park. Um, and I believe we are picking up a few spaces with this modification. Um, in, within the Santander Bank, there will be the typical, uh, Starbucks signage with their queue line. Um, and that package will be in front of everybody once, um, if this is approved, um, once we go and actually start designing the building in the, uh, presentation package for the Filming Commissioner. I'll turn it over to Steve, unless you have any questions here to talk about any of the particulars.
Did, did, um, do you know what the, um, queue size is for drive-through for Dunkin's?
Uh, typical Dunkins?
Well, I would say that Dunkin's is here in Townsend.
I don't, I wouldn't want to speculate that. I know part of, they have a, they have a little bit more of a challenging drive-through because it's to the rear.
Mm-hmm.
Right, people wrap around to the rear, so I wouldn't know what that actual queue line is in the back. Um, but this is something that, um, has been, um, depending upon what Starbucks are in, what market, that queue line expands and contracts. Um, but they feel that, we've had numerous conversations, because we wanted to get this right with them, but they feel that this is a, um, 12-line queue line for them. Which is why for, uh, for planning purposes, we try to keep this queue line as tight to both the original design, but as tight to the building as possible. So that people come in and then exit out with a new drive-through.
One other question. Have, have you had any discussions with the Highway Department or anyone in terms of traffic? Um, because that's, um, that's a terrible intersection.
They did have a traffic study.
They did.
Traffic study done.
We did, we were anticipating your, that question, um, we did engage in, in a traffic engineer to do a traffic memo along with this.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
No, no, no. It's a huge file. We're not, it's a huge file. We're not for paperwork, um, so, uh, um, we tried to, um, anticipate some of these questions, um, so that's why we engaged, um, a traffic engineer to do, supplement this with a traffic memo, just so that everybody could feel comfortable. Um, we, of course, are thrilled that Santander Bank shuttered. Um, it's been closed for uh, two years. Um, and we are thrilled that, uh, this credit word tenant, um, located in Townsend, we've been working. It's, um, this is about a year in process to get them here. So we're thrilled to be here and be able to present it to you, so... Would I pay the work to?
Any other questions?
Yeah, you have a question about the traffic study? I don't know if that was about, of the, um, you had a metric, I think, on like pass-through rate? And it's, I think it's, it surmises at like 90, you expect 90% of the people regularly traveling that road to be the customer base? And not necessarily to add new cars to the route of travel, but it would add new cars to the plaza travel?
Correct.
Is that how it is?
You want to go? That's correct, for the, for the record, Steve Boacki with Adgeo Cornell Associates would be similar to this in my project. Uh, as was mentioned, uh, Vanessa Associates, uh, did a traffic report for this. And a, as you mentioned, they did conclude that the drive-by, because the, out of the gate, the use for the Starbucks is more intensive than the bank. However, because there's such a huge drive-by capture, there's no major uptick in traffic over here. So, uh, they concluded there won't be anything that was detrimental to the, to the roadway.
Right, and I think what they were figuring is about in and out, about 97 trips. You know, Pike Peak is kind of, had a peak and then dropped a little bit at night with, I think it was around like 47 or 50 or something like that, and that is both coming in and going out. Um, so they felt comfortable with, um, both the use, but also it being in a shopping center that was traditionally designed for it as well.
Definitely, whatever you would put in there, you'd have more traffic.
I understand.
Because it's bacon.
Yep, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and that's one of the reasons why we tried to be a little bit thoughtful with the pattern. Um, and also, you know, Starbucks is, although, um, we all know we all love drive-throughs, and that's most of the retailers, um, especially post-COVID, we, we're moving into drive-throughs. Um, but also Starbucks has a component of, and that's the reason why you have 66 seats. You know, Starbucks does have a component that, um, now that the the cafes are open again, that there are people that come, sit down, sit with their laptops. So that's one of the reasons why we were thoughtful in creating kind of this parking area too, knowing that not everybody's going to go through the drive-through. Uh, we find in retail centers, there's a nice mixture with people using a Starbucks or a Panera to work while they're traveling, you know, but it's on their phone with their laptops. Um, and then the convenience of just going through the drive-through.
Really, I mean, I don't remember every word, but was there any concern about since you're looking at capturing 90% of the people who would drive by anyway, uh, a traffic light? For the in and out traffic? Um, good.
I think with the tra, uh, traffic engineer noted there wouldn't be a requirement for the traffic light. It would only be a hindrance in this particular case, it wouldn't add, you know, wouldn't add to the traffic management, given the sub, the limited, the limited potential for upticks, so, uh, they didn't do it unnecessarily or, with, with serving a purpose, I guess, is the best way to say it.
Okay, I just hope that should be out there.
Sure.
And then, any particular thoughts about the high school being across the street?
So, uh, you know, and I, I'll talk about that on two different perspectives. On the retailer perspective, you know, any customers, good customers. Um, on the property side, although the property likes, this property obviously likes any kind of traffic. Um, it's more a traditional grocery anchored center with people coming in and out for Hannafords, and obviously, um, our other, uh, what we consider our other anchored baleys. Um, so although they, we tracked people from the high school, this center has never, um, this isn't going to sway the traffic from being across from the high school, if that makes any sense. People, you know...
How about foot traffic? And, you know, they, I would imagine you're going to have a lot more people crossing the street to walk over to Starbucks.
So, um, that's an interesting question. Um, we, I know they made some improvements when they were doing the high school, kind of looking, I mean, by they, um, from the engineers, um, on the McDonald's side. Um, I don't know how many people cross over 119.
True.
You know, that is something maybe we can, we can look to see if we can investigate it, but I don't, I don't know how many people actually cross over.
I don't know, I, I would, I would recommend that you're, you go out there
Yeah.
when school
Yeah.
closes.
Yeah.
Because there's quite a few students, there is a crossing guard there that, you know, has a stop sign. And so any sort of tr, going in or out of that And so, any sort of tr- going in or out of that shopping center, I avoid it just because it really backs up traffic, and you have a lot of kids that literally um cross the road and
McDonald's.
Go to McDonald's. I think they have their machines here, and I think that's where.
No, but the crossing is right at the entrance there.
To the high.
To the right.
Correct, correct, this is the high school, but I think a lot of people.
Yeah, but they cross right, they cross right there, they don't cross, yeah, they cross right there.
Correct, and I think that's why, um, this path, I think, was what was studied originally with the engineers. Um, with that, because this has the, the moonlight too.
I, I feel, I noticed a lot more traffic more towards the left side of them, foot traffic on the left side. But what I would be concerned with the attractiveness of Starbucks
Yeah.
for the youth, would be crossing the uh entry-exit uh to the plaza and just, you know, I don't believe there's any sidewalks or really, you do, essentially just weave through the parking lots to get over there.
Right. So originally what we, what we designed here, because this is where the, this is where the, the sidewalk is. Right, down in here. So, one of the reasons why we put the, this area here was originally, well, it was designed for potential bike traffic.
Oh, sure.
From the bike path. Yeah. Um, so that was one of the attractiveness of putting the outdoor seating on this side. Um, to allow, to be able to capture kind of someone coming into the, the system. Um, but this is where, so the sidewalk comes in this way, and these are the stairs that come up through the valleys, that's on that side. Because this is where the big, uh, retention storm on retention period is. Any questions?
If you go back to my high school days, I'm going to ignore the crosswalk. I know I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Those direct routes.
Yeah.
Whether it's the crosswalk there or not, I'm going to go right across one nineteen, right across that grass, so. I've only been here for two years, but I. This intersection over here for me is like super windy. These areas right here is going here, that way. The one-nineteeners?
Yeah.
Right now, down, yeah, down in here.
You're just entering into that whole plaza, and you, you, you come in there and then the, the lanes of parking are just positioned kind of coming.
Everyone is, you're supposed to have the right-of-way and everyone else has a stop sign.
Yeah, yeah, the intent is to highlight those stop features.
Yes.
The intent is to highlight those stop features as part of the redesign, and that's part of it, you know. Right now, you have trucks that come around the edge unmitigated, you know, and then you have, as you mentioned, crossing the traffic. We hope that this will provide additional uh control, if you will, of this area. Uh, as well as channeling the trucks, you know, not through, obviously, on the perimeter where there would be crossing here, but it'd be more of a centralized location right here, but we think that's going to make a difference from a traffic perspective.
A lot of people do use the, um, McDonald's entrance off one nineteen and they go run back. They don't come in that way, right?
Yeah.
Yes, I do. Coming in. I'm coming in too. I do do that. Coming inside. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I do. Yeah.
There's also a hope that, there's also a hope that we'll capture some folks leaving out the shopping.
Right, oh, yeah.
I know this question isn't specific to your, to your layout, what, um, if you're willing to share, what stage of negotiation with Starbucks are you at? Are they tentatively committed to the site pending permits? Or they are, okay.
Yep.
How are your, uh, your other tenants, are they, are they aware or supportive of the new client, new business?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes. Anything that's, um,
Or traffic.
Yeah, and, you know, um, attracting such a strong, you know, a, a strong operator is always beneficial for, for everybody. Um, both for people who, uh, may not have come to this center. Um, but this is allowing them to stop, right, so the synergy changes a little bit. Um, and, and not everybody is, you know, is a Starbucks drinker, right? Um, but it's just something that looks and feels new, and then, you know, starts off, you know, just attracts different people that potentially didn't realize that, you know, the jeweler was here. You know, it's, so it's, it's that kind of reawakening that people may have passed it because it's not where they shop, but now they realize, oh, well, I can go here, or our new tenant, uh, our newer tenant, one nineteen nutrition will benefit just for seeing new people. Just, just a moment.
Good question.
Yeah, just a moment. Andrew, to your comment, um, regarding how, how the tenants feel. Yeah. Do you do a survey? Do you survey your other occupants to see their pluses and minuses to get their, uh, someone coming? We are in contact with our, with our tenants. So, just in the conversation, we've been, we've been on the site for a while, um, since twenty sixteen. So, in conversations with our, with our tenants, um, you know, in respect for our clients, some of those conversations, we need to keep confidential. Yeah. Right, until, but we have a feeling for what's happening, what their feelings are. Uh, but for the majority of this center, there have also been more outstanding tenants. So that's both worlds. Okay, public comes after. Okay, thank you. Um, thank you for that. You know, having that out there, I think it's good Yeah. for them. Okay, if nobody has anybody, anything else from the board?
Uh, one more. Um, so, the, the rail trail is, is right over there behind the, right there. So what would be the logical walking path for a walker to come off, then, uh, to Starbucks?
Do you have that?
Overall, it shows that.
Okay.
I know the route I've traveled.
Yeah, I don't know, I hear it all short enough.
Which room have you traveled?
Oh, come right out behind Hannafords and either go to the right or
Yep.
huck it to the left.
Yeah.
Um.
Right by the dumpsters.
So, um, I think when we originally started this, uh, way back when, was some catching people somewhere in like this section? Um, but that's, you know, one of the reasons, kind of, again, kind of, everybody was thinking about the trails and bikes and bike tracks and within the seedings, that kind of was the intention of designing this area here.
Would you, you don't have any proposed work on the edge of the property towards the rail trail to?
Not, not at this time, no. Everything's focused in and around this, this area itself.
Right.
Would you consider having any signage in that area or enhancements to encourage a path off the trail?
We did look at it.
You did?
Any preference of which?
Uh, that would be.
Access point off of the trail?
No, wherever, as long as they're not walking straight through the department line.
Right.
I think that would be safest.
Yeah, right, safest route. Okay, I need to do the referral comments, if you guys are ready. Yeah. Okay, um, these have to be read into the record. This one is from the Board of Health. In regard to special permit application for eighteen Main Street, the Board of Health offers the following comments. In, in the planning board application, the applicant's consultant used water meter readings to determine the existing flow to the system, and then added the Starbucks flow to prove that there is available capacity. Three-ten CMR fifteen point two oh three lists design flows for certain facilities' uses, and these numbers must be utilized. Three-ten CMR fifteen point two oh three six allows for the use of water meter readings to establish a flow where a use is not listed, or the facility has unique design features which result in significantly different flows than those listed. Three-ten CMR fifteen point two oh three six requires water meter readings be doubled for a safety factor, and use of water meter readings also requires approval from Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. In the past, Key Point Partners has provided a spreadsheet with occupants' uses, square footage space, et cetera, to the Board of Health to make a determination if there is available capacity in the system to accommodate a new proposed occupant. A similar sp- spreadsheet must be provided to the Townsend Board of Health for the board to make a proper determination as to whether the system has available capacity to accommodate the Starbucks. The proposed use will likely require installation of an exterior grease trap. This will require a permit from the Board of Health. A food service permit must be obtained from the Board of Health. This will require submittal of an app, of, an application, fees, and kitchen plans to review for compliance prior to starting kitchen build-out. The property is served by town water. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. From the Conservation Commission. Comments are within jurisdiction. Um.
Yeah, it's NOI, notice.
No, no, has been submitted. And NOI, NOI. We, we received our, yeah, conference, NOI decision. Okay. And the hearing will, hearing will take place ten twenty-three, twenty-four. What? It, it didn't. It did? Yeah, yeah, and we, and we, uh, we got a unanimous, they're all set. They're all set, okay. Yep. Very good. Thank you. Highway Department. No comments, right? Yep. Okay. I just put it in, I can make sure. Okay, sorry, I did see that initial there. I was looking for the comment. Okay, and then this one, land use coordinator was no comment. Fire Department, no comment. Um, Water Department. I think the Fire Department did have a comment. No, it's a checkmark. Is that right? Oh, I thought they were in favor of it. No. No, that's the next one. Okay. Uh, Water Department, great project, no issues. Okay. Okay. Coffee drinkers there. Board of selection, no board of selection available. Or seated. All right, that's part of public record. Right. All right, um, next. All right, um, was there any other written correspondence? Yeah, not on this. Okay, um. I will note that the stormwater management permit application is in the peer review process. Findings letter will be available prior to November eighteenth, so it's a probably continued to that. Mm-hmm. Okay, now it's, there's no other written, so nothing from the public comments. Yeah. Okay. Hmm, or discussion of any other or additional technical peer review, there, there is none. Um, now, public. Comments?
Yeah, um, concerning Starbucks, just a quick question. Um, I'm retired, so I don't have to worry about traveling and commuting or anything. But my only question would be, is, I'm thinking school starts about seven thirty, seven o'clock, something like that. And, but that's also a time period where people are commuting to work. So I'm, I don't know if there's like, say, uh, yeah, crossing guard or somebody at the location of where they come into Hannaford, but my only concern is, and having used Starbucks myself going to work, that there is a tendency to have several cars or whatever, or up to twelve, that could be in queue to get a, a coffee, but then coming out, what about school buses coming in from both directions? Because they're coming from Apple, I would assume, and they're also coming from Townsend area. Is that going to complicate that intersection?
Yeah, speaking about this maneuver, vehicles coming out at that particular time, so, so the, the traffic assessment was done and, and is done in the lens of what the peak times are, so it's evaluated in that spectrum to say this will be the peak times and what, what type of traffic will be there at that, at those peak times? And that's evaluated again in that lens, so it's considered as part of a, of a traffic management.
It's just that I could see a, a problem there. Just because I know some people are just a little bit too fast coming out of a place because they're running late. And you got kids, and you got school buses, and school buses returning, and I would assume they always have the right of play. Just a comment.
Uh, invalid, and that, and that's one of the reasons why we instantly hired our traffic engineer, right, just to.
And they would have more detail.
A hundred percent, that, that's why we wouldn't, we wanted to come into this hearing um, with that review, with that honest third-party review, and that's why we, um, presented it in that age just so that everybody could kind of take a look at it and understand kind of the perspective.
Thank you.
Well, Cindy?
Hi, um, Cindy King, and I, I want to speak out in favor of this project. Um, I'm going to confess that I'm a Starbucks drinker, a customer, so I'm, I'm, of course, leaning towards that no matter what. But I think that it's, uh, Starbucks would be a great partner to have in Townsend. I, I think that, um, yes, the, the traffic at that intersection has been a, a complaint center for a number of years for the, for the residents of Townsend, but I think that it would benefit the town greatly if, if everyone involved, both community members, the, the mall or the shopping center owners, and just, any, anyone that, that can contribute to ways to, to assist with that as needed. Um, would, would be, the benefits outweigh any of the, the problems I, I think that would come up. Um, I think, um, no matter what business would go in there, we would see an increase, some increase in traffic. And we can't possibly restrict what businesses would go in there. To say, to not have any increase in traffic would mean, we, we only allow a business in there that doesn't have customers, which kind of defeats the purpose in, in that, in a retailer, um, center like that. And I, I think what, what's really excites me, not only because it's Starbucks, but what, what excites me is about for revenue for the town. I think not only making a number of permits to the property, so that increases the initial bump on the property values, there'll be an, an, at least a slight increase in property tax revenues for the first few years of this is going on. And then it's a restaurant, and what I think a lot of people in town forget that we have a meals tax, we, as a town, we've taken the, the max meals tax, so we'll get it, the more customers that come into Starbucks, the more money revenues that come into the town. And that will help all of us with, um, we, we've talked over it for the last four, five years, but everything that we can get can help with other town budget things. So I think anything that, any of the boards involved with the approval of this project can assist everybody that's trying to make this happen, to make it happen, and to get it quickly. I really would like to not drive through Littleton or Lomis or Nashua to get my Starbucks.
Thank you, Cindy. I, I have three public hearings tonight, so I'm trying to get through this one. Was there anybody who wanted to make a comment about the Starbucks, this hearing? Okay, hearing seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to November eighteenth at six forty-five P M.
I make a motion to continue this public hearing to November the eighteenth at six forty-five P M.
Oh, so I get it, any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, I will call both foods. Terrible, Hoxsey, she has.
Last specality, yes. I want you, yes. Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Shepherd, yes. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Yes, thank you.
We'll see you on the eighteenth.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Well, you'll all be on table, but yes, in our names. Okay, we are now at and I'm calling the public hearing to order for twenty-two Main Street. Um, modification to site plan review special permit. Please introduce yourself. Carol Hoxes.
Lance McNally.
Andrew Shepherd.
And Laura Schiffern. Uh, there's a public sign-on sheet circulating for this. Do you have another sheet going around? For the second hearing, everybody's signed in. If you don't need a cover, if they leave.
Just for this property, I'll be abstaining, so. Yeah, so I'm gonna jump out, then I'll be back when you guys are ready.
Does he have to leave the public hearing?
Yes, the state's recommended. Yeah.
Ah, okay, yeah.
I, I will, for the sake of the state's advice, but.
You know, so he's not making faces.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I'll be.
Alright, thank you, Andrew. The record will show that Andrew Shepherd is excused himself. In accordance with Mass General Law Chapter forty-eight and Townsend zoning bylaws, section one forty-five dash forty-two site plan review special permit and section one forty-five dash sixty-five special permits. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, November fourth at seven fifteen P M in Selectman's Chambers at Memorial Hall. And the rest of the notification. To review an application received by Sally Ferber regarding a modification of an existing special permit to accommodate Massachusetts Department of Transportation comments. General realignment and design of parking lot, the property is located at twenty-two Main Street, assessors map forty-one, block six, lot zero, zoned O C D outlining commercial district. And in the aquifer protection override district. Interested parties can express their support or opposition during the hearing or submit written comments beforehand. Copies of the applications are available for review at Town Hall during business hours or by email to the address. Respectfully submitted, Laura E. Schiffern, Chair Townsend Planning Board. Okay. Applicant.
Uh, since the record, Chris Anderson with Hanigan Engineering, on behalf of Sally Ferber, uh, for the modification of the existing site plan review and special permit. Um, as we just read into the record, uh, this project approved a little while ago, um, and since then uh, the applicant's been working through D O T comments, because we are within, uh, the jurisdictional area of the Mass D O T. During that review process, uh, several concerns were raised by the, uh, D O T relative to the access and the original configuration of the property. Uh, the board might remember that the original layout of the site incorporated a rounding, or a driveway that effectively encompassed the entire structure. Um, what that did was it created a significant, um, in our, in our office's opinion, uh, intersection concern, because no matter which way the vehicle came out of the site, they would have to turn around their shoulder in order to pull onto this road. And this road is a very heavily trafficked way, so, um, inherently created an unsafe condition in our opinion. During that process, we did review with, uh, D O T relative to their accessibility requirements and everything like that. That D O T is now currently pushing forward to make the area more ADA accessible. Um, in those conversations, um, we ultimately determined that the road or the access to the property as well as the parking configuration needs to be reconfigured. Um, so as shown on the plan currently, uh, we've realigned the driveway so that it provides a ninety-degree, uh, intersection with uh, Main Street, which inherently creates a much safer condition. This becomes a more traditional intersection, if you will. Uh, from there, uh, the ADA parking space will ride immediately on the front of the building. And the remaining visitor parking, uh, employee parking will extend south into the development and would provide off of the paved driveway. Uh, the stormwater management system has been reevaluated to confirm that it's still complies, it still does. Uh, we've incorporated the, uh, drainage report with our smel. Um, and, yeah, other couple benefits that does, that do occur because of this reconfiguration is that we've removed a significant amount of pavement immediately in front of the building, so that's more green space, lawn space, rather than the parking area. With that being said, uh, those are the, uh, general reconfiguration comments that we've had to address with D O T. If there's any questions from the board or the public, I'll be glad to have you.
Um, do we have any referrals on this one?
Yeah.
Okay, from the building commissioner. New attached comments from ten three. Believe the layout is better than original. Um, these are his ten-three comments. I have reviewed, reviewed both designs, and here are my thoughts regarding ten-one Hanigan design. One, they have an additional three parking spaces, which is compliant, need eight to have ten through ten with their bylaws. The original design did not account for the vestibule square foot and only had seven. Uh, two, the handicap space, one, is all that is required person mass A A B. It should be van accessible eight feet wide, unload area, which is which seems to be compliant. It appears they removed a significant amount of paving, which results in much less impervious surface area, another good point. They removed the H, H cap ramp. And simply are using a sidewalk, in my opinion, is much easier to navigate for a disabled person, which is another plus. Curved cut, although they are moving this with proper state permissions, I assume. I see no issue with this location. It is now existing close to Patriot Pizza. And they are going to be close to McDonald, um, to McDonald's instead. Uh, same in my opinion. Six, the design is very simple to understand and use. The, this older one, I think, would cause confusion to some people. Um, and that was from the left side. Land Use Coordinator. See enclosed email for planning comments. And highlighted part in the plan is to consider adding a sidewalk along the perimeter of the parking lot, so that visitors, animals are not walking across the spaces to access the building. To work with Hanigan Engineering to determine whether the large stormwater management pond shown at the near site is necessary. There is about five thousand square feet of proposed tree clearing to install this space in forest cover is one of the best natural stormwater solutions, so I would like the board to consider seeing if there is an alternative stormwater V M P that could be installed elsewhere on the site. Um, E G rain garden perner along the proposed parking lot. Conservation Commission. No comment. Boy Sartman. I'm not gonna read it again. Just no comment. Um, and I think that's, yeah. Now, public comment. Any public comment? None. Me, and so, and did you have another comment you wanted to make?
Um, just a point, I don't think so.
Okay, and, and he has, or the applicant has received, um, department comments.
You have, right?
No, I did not.
Oh, okay.
No, that's the first time I saw those.
I see what we're doing.
So, yeah, I will give the copies to you. Okay, I, I mailed them to you.
Okay, so, um. Hearing is seeing no other comments, but entertaining motions too. Continue the public hearing to November eighteenth. Uh, which one do you want? November eighteenth or twelve-nine?
Um, I believe the only comments that we've seen are some minor ones relative to land use, um, so I think we should be able to get those turned around by the.
Right, to the eighteenth at seven fifteen P M.
Make a motion to continue the hearing till November the eighteenth at seven?
Fifteen.
Fifteen P M.
And I'll second it. Okay, any other discussion? Carol Hoxes, yes?
Lance McNally, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you very much. Uh, yes.
So we've got a little bit of time.
Yeah, I just, I, I think I'm gonna ask for a little break. We just, um. Uh, if you have any permission, I can take a pic stuff.
Alright.
We have a few minutes, and then we can, we might get one other thing done.
Okay.
Okay.
So how, is it Emily or Emma? Okay, see, I gotta read it the second time, Emma.
Yep, yep. Good.
So, how was your trip?
Oh.
To Albuquerque.
Yeah, it's been a month now, we haven't actually seen you guys. Uh, it was good, it was good.
Did you go up the mountain, up the tram?
We did not go up the tram, we did a hike, um, almost, but thank you.
Oh, thank you.
It was like a nice edge hike along the ridge line.
Yeah, I'm afraid of heights, so you'd never get me up there, I was barely getting up the tram.
Were you in Albuquerque?
Yeah.
You know, the only state that I have not been to is New Mexico. I've been to forty, the other forty-nine states.
Oh, no kidding.
Yeah, well, you've got me beat. I've been to a lot of states, based to the Air Force.
Sure, sure, sure.
Been to a lot of Air Force bases.
Airports don't count.
Air Force bases don't count, I've seen.
Well, airports do not count.
Well, Air Force.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Go to school in?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Look, that tram up the mountain's pretty.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's beautiful, yeah, I mean, you get such a great view of.
Yeah.
It's a great little area.
I had no idea it's still about like twenty, thirty minutes from city.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
So is that where you're getting married?
We are getting married in Albuquerque, yeah.
Oh, you're picking Albuquerque.
That's where Emma's from.
Oh, she's from there. Oh, okay.
So, figured, uh, her family's a little bit smaller, so figured would that compared to my family size, so we do the wedding out in Albuquerque and we'll have a reception in Townsend. It's, uh, I mean, she's from there, so it's easier for her to plan.
Oh, here.
Uh, we met at school.
Oh, at school, okay.
But, you know, we're trying to think about like food and venue and specific things, like from two thousand miles away.
Oh, yeah.
It's a little easier for her. It's nice, it was nice to go down and kind of look at everything.
That wasn't your first time?
Nope, nope, uh, normally go every, been like five or six times.
Oh, yeah.
She actually used to work on the, uh, Kirkland, Kirkland Air Force Base. Which I'm sure you guys.
Yeah, I've been.
Sorry, everyone. Um, I'd like to continue with, uh, your manner, um, with metal load. So where do we, where do you think we are right now?
I guess that's why I'm here, I'm not sure. I think the rain, where the storm gardens are working. But we really haven't had a major downfall of rain since either, so it's hard to say. Except, when they did put, um, they put rock on two ends of each storm garden, that seems to have done a, a great job. The grass is coming in, like I said. Um, on the other side of the mound, if you will, that goes down to the storm garden, especially the one between one oh eight and one ten. I'm going to let the grass go walk, to, you know, get some deep roots in. And I'm hoping, and I'm pretty confident now, because the rain that we have had, it really has drained. It, you know, um, the one behind the house, some standing water for maybe a couple hours, um, maybe half a day, and by the next day it's gone. So to me, that says it's working. So it is coming down, because there are, if you look at the, the, at the yard, it, it is pretty steep in certain areas, so the water does run. You know, I'm, I'm new to this, I'm learning, but it appears, in my opinion, that they are working at this time.
Yeah, so where are we in the process? Because I'm sure that there must be, well, I don't, I don't know, but, um, there must be, somebody is being held up here with something. There's a contractor that's done things, and there must be agreement between the two of you that maybe funds or whatever, maybe.
Yeah, there is money involved in this.
Okay.
The storm gardens need to be completed, yes, and approved.
Yeah, um. Miss, uh, the developer is online, if you wanted to ask him a question, um, but as far as the planning board um, and the town, everything is in order, um, and that report from Highway. If you wanted to, you know, wait until you have a conversation with the developer, um, about maybe that additional work or to discuss it right now, but I see nothing holding this up.
Well, I guess, I, my question would be is, are you planning to, um, fa- following the recommendations, um, in terms of the, um, stone riprap?
The stone, say that.
His comments are, everything looks as it, uh, hi- in other words, are you planning to follow the highway superintendent's recommendations?
I haven't seen them.
Has, has the developer?
Phil, can you chime in?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep, sorry, I'm on my phone, I, I don't know if you can see my face or not.
No.
Sorry. The Highway Department's, uh, comments are new to me tonight. But I, I believe that the grass is all established along the edges of the driveway, so I'm, I'm not, I don't know if he's, um, seeing something I'm not seeing.
I mean, his comment is, I recommend installing stone riprap on the left corner of the driveway as you are um, facing the house. This will help with erosion.
Okay, I believe there's like a little bit of bark mulch or wood chips on the corner of the left, front left-hand corner of his driveway.
I think it's stone.
Uh, yeah, he's saying stone, but I think, I think currently there's, there's wood chips or bark mulch.
Oh, okay.
Oh, and he wants stone.
Yeah, it's like a four-foot, four-foot little, uh, section.
Okay. Does it, does it make sense to have him get that in writing and that we, um, address this again in our next meeting?
Yeah.
And just see what, what transpires and what gets done between now and then. And just see what, what transpires and what gets done between now and then.
One comment, Phil, um, Phil, I think you might go with this too, um, I understand the left side, but when we really had the downpours this summer, where I saw the runoff of the street was if you were facing the house, it would be on the right side because there is a drop in the, um, in the yard, if you will, and a lot of it ran down there, because I saw it going across the, the driveway. The other side, yes, but I don't think it, it's not as severe as it was on the other side. But stone would probably make sense.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I don't believe there's any more erosion now, I think everything's established. But yeah, stone on both sides, uh, I'm fine with that, just, I just want to get this kind of wrapped up and moved along. Would the board, would the board consider, um, you know, I'll go do that tomorrow if that's, if that's fine, subject to approval for adding the stone? I'll go talk to the Highway Superintendent, tell me exactly what he wants to do, or I can do it tomorrow.
Vote, you know, appropriately.
Okay.
Make your vote very clear.
Okay, um, if you're.
Yeah, I guess so, are, are we saying on both sides, Phil, or just that one side?
Yeah, uh, both sides easy, it, it sounds like it's a, a really easy thing, a little riprap on either side.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, also remove the, uh, silt fence and straw waddles out there. That was another comment.
The, uh, the other com- Lance, would you please read the other comment first?
Yes. Um, hold on, I gotta scroll up here.
Have that as part of the motion?
Yeah, um, the, um, other comment was silk fence and straw
Waddle.
Waddles need to be removed. Silk fence and straw waddles need to be removed.
Sure, yeah, consider it done.
Okay, so Lance, would you make the motion?
Phil, could you do it Wednesday instead, we have grandchildren tomorrow?
Uh, sure, what, me and you, yeah, we can talk, when's the best time to do it, that's, that's fine. I do want to talk to probably, maybe talk to, yeah.
Okay, uh, can you make the motion, please, with those two considerations?
Yes.
We approve the storm. We, we approve the storm water?
No, you're, there's a certificate right there, um, on the file folder, so this is what you're doing.
Oh, thank you.
You're gonna approve that, um, with the conditions that you want to talk about.
Okay.
And you'll sign.
Okay, um, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna try this one. Um.
I have confidence in you.
Right, so the planning, planning board conditionally approves the storm water management per- permit certificate of completion, conditioned upon, one, that the silt fence and straw waddles need to be removed.
Okay.
Second, that the um, riprap, stone riprap is installed on the left corner of the driveway as you are facing the house.
I think he said he'd do both.
He, the left and the right, excuse me, and, um, approval from the Highway Department, or Highway Superintendent.
Well, per their suggestion, but is Highway gonna go out and look into the family after it's done?
I, I think, uh, Phil just basically said that he was going to meet with the Highway Department.
Yeah, I'll just give him a call to see what size, size stone, he can probably tell me on the phone real quickly what he wants, it's, it's probably very standard. Yep.
Okay.
So she had that motion clearly? Well, then you can give her that when she listens to it again, okay. And there was a second, Andrew seconded? Is there any other discussion? None, vote please. Carol Hawes says yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
I can't watch it, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Shepherd, yes. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, we'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, Phil.
Yep, have a good night.
Yeah, it is, let me just see here. Okay. Seven forty-five P M. Public hearing together, guidelines, whatever. Trying to order the public hearing for two forty-nine Main Street. Application site can review special permit. Uh, we'll call the board. Carol Hawes is present.
Lance McNally.
I can't watch it.
Andrew Shepherd.
Laura Shepherd present. And the signing sheet is still the same. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty A and Townsend Zoning Bylaw, Section one forty-five dash forty-two, Site Plan Review, Special Permit, and Section one forty-five dash sixty-five Special Permits, the Board, Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, November fourth, twenty twenty-four, at seven forty-five P M in the Selectman's Chambers at Memorial Hall. And that's it. To review an application received from Amy Shaw regarding a change in use proposal to renovate existing building structures located at two forty-nine Main Street, assessors fifty-one block ninety-five, flat zero, map zoned D C D Downtown Commercial District and Aquafer Protection Overlay District to open and operate a United Parcel Service commercial store. Interested parties can express their support or opposition during the hearing or special written comments beforehand. Copies of the application are available for review at Town Hall during the regular business hours and via email through the planning board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend respectfully submitted, Laura E. Shepherd, Chair of Townsend Planning Board. And the applicant. Mr. Smith. Okay.
So I'm gonna explain a little bit.
Hold on, introduce yourself first.
My name is Washa, and I own the property at two forty-nine sixty-two Main Street.
And I'm, I'm Kevin Strepp, I'm, I'm not his representative, although he's my friend and, and, and I thought I would try to help him through, especially in case he's a little bit of language barrier.
Okay, we will allow that.
More on the communication side.
Okay.
So, this is the existing building we have.
Have a copy.
Yeah, um, they have the copies. They have the copies of this as well.
We have, we have this, is that different?
Uh, that we submitted is a small copy as well, first.
Yeah, so this came in this afternoon, um.
This is?
Yes, so it's, yeah, just got stamped in like three o'clock, so it is uploaded within your folders, but you're probably just getting a, a look at this for the first time.
If I could, if I could show the board, this is the existing store, this is the little section along the carpet store. There's a currently an eight-foot wide opening in this. And that's the reason, basically, we want to close that up, that little wall.
Uh-huh, because this is gonna be separate.
Yes, just to separate this.
It used to be separate before.
It was separate, and now they're bringing it back.
We made that block of wall take out, but now we want to put that back because we want to make the U P S store in that section.
This is the current store. This was closed up at one time, he opened it back up, now basically wants to close it back up again.
This is one nineteen here.
One nineteen, back of rear of the building, which is parking, which is that section with back end parking right there.
And both units have a front door as well as the back door, with both, both units have a separate restroom as well, because it was used to be a second unit before.
So this is what he was having specifically, and then what he was just showing us was, that's just like a hand drawing of.
Well, it's, yeah, it's an architectural drawing of the building, but sketch of the building. If you put this, put this in perspective, that would be it.
Okay.
The parking.
Which is the reason for the plan.
Which is the reason of the plan, you've got that parking there. Potential for two more here. And then this parking over here, municipal parking, or town parking, which is allowed because within a hundred feet of the building. They were two backings spot short, weren't they, what were you sure, two or three?
Two parking shorts.
Two backings spot short, you have two basically right here that are right next to the building. And then we could, we could use some additional backing, I don't, it's not gonna be a happening place, not gonna be a busy situation, so uh, you know, how many people a day are gonna go in there and drop their stuff off, five, ten, whatever it is, it's not, it's not a large amount of people that are gonna use it.
Always a pretty, uh, heavy Amazon shopper still.
Well, yeah, might add around the Christmas, around the Christmas time or something, but that's UPS anyway, Amazon delivers right to you.
Okay, well then, let me go through the, um, referral comments, I get those into the record and then we'll see where we are. And can I just ask back, have, have the applicant received the referral comments?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so from the Building Commissioner, see attached ten ten comments. Okay, from the Building Commissioner. I reviewed the application and have the following comments, one, the zoning, this would be an allowed use in D C D District. Principal use table, Section D dash ten, retail stores and services, not elsewhere set for. Okay. Two, building, this is not a change in use per building code, only per zoning bylaws, and understanding is this area in question is part of a merchantile operation now, and this is this new operation would be considered merchantile use also. I would recommend a review final layout with Building Department to see what changes may be required based on existing, based on existing, they should be in good shape. The Building Department cannot order changes when use is not changing and minor alterations are being done. Three, accessibility, it appears from their site plan, they have an accessible parking spot as they are not changing use, I cannot make them add anything per code. But again, I would recommend a review with the Building Department to see if there is anything that can be improved. And if you have any questions. Land use coordinator. Applicant has provided existing conditions only, need a plan showing proposed conditions. Both should have
Legions.
Legion?
Yeah.
Both should have legion.
Legends.
Legend, which is.
And all other components as required by one forty-five dash forty-two. Narratives or architectural plans for proposed use should be included.
So maybe submitted that.
You submitted it. Okay, do we have that already, guys?
You have a legend on the, right on that plan right there.
I've got the legend, right, there's a legend too.
Okay, all right, we have it, it's to, it was gotten today, so she's not reviewed them. Okay, there you go. Uh, for the Selectman, I'm not gonna read that again. Uh, Conservation Commission, no comment. Uh, Border Health, no comment. Yeah, we have, okay. We have petition. I think it was a historic comment.
Yeah, the historic district?
Yeah, because I, it was a historic district comment, um. I read it. Okay, well, I mean, I have it. Um, this is building. Uh, that's building. Lot land use. You might have missed it, so I'm just gonna do it again. Historic. This property is located within Townsend Historic District number one and will need to comply with all district requirements prior to approval. Okay, so they have this, because you're saying they got all of them, okay.
Good to hear that one.
Did you also read the Border Health, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Okay, they didn't have. I'm sorry, I just missed it.
Yeah, Border Health didn't have a comment. But I just read the historic, thank you. Um, Selectman has no comment. Conservation, no comment, and Border Health, no comment.
Okay.
Um. Okay, and then, um, I don't know, but in the whole time that I've, that I've been on planning, and Lance, you've been on planning longer, have you seen the petition? Have you ever seen the petition?
No.
I think that's kind of cool.
I think the.
Oh, but I have to read this. I have to read this. Um, petition to support the opening of a United Parcel Service U P S store at two forty-nine Main Street, Townsend. We, the understand, are, undersigned, are supportive of the change in use proposal submitted by Amy Shaw, which would allow the renovation of an existing building structures at two forty-nine Main Street to open and operate a United Parcel Service U P S store in Townsend's Downtown Commercial District. Reasons for support, increase, increase convenience. The addition of a U P S store will provide a convenient local option for shipping, receiving, printing, and other essential business services benefiting residents and local businesses. Economic growth, a new U P S store can attract more foot traffic to the area fostering economic growth and supporting nearby businesses. Community development, the U P S store will make use of an existing infrastructure aligning with the goals of Downtown Commercial District and help strengthen the downtown area as a business hub. Minimal traffic impact, we believe that the proposed U P S store will not cause significant increases in traffic. U P S stores typically preserve customers in short visits, which will prevent congestion, additionally, the lo- location is already zoned for commercial use and the nature of business that U P S store generates less continuous vehicle activity than larger retail businesses, further reducing any traffic impact. We encourage the Townsend Planning Board to approve the special permit and site plan review for the purpose of U P S store. We believe this development will positively contribute to the vibrancy and convenience of Townsend's downtown area and serve the needs of the community. Public hearing details, Townsend Planning Board will hold a public hearing to review this proposal among the date and time and location. We invite all residents to sign this petition in support of this proposal, together with some towns in a more connected, convenient, and vibrant community.
And if I can add, there's forty-two signatures.
Yeah, there's forty-two signatures. I don't have to read them all, do I?
No.
Because I'd have to be able to read them. Okay, um. That was nice.
Thank you.
My opinion.
Uh, also, we have a, still, we are operating as a two separate unit, even though the block is there, the wall, we pay two bills, electricity, gas, everything.
Mm-hmm.
Everything's still on separate services.
Still on separate services.
It has been, and never stopped.
Okay, so, um, the U P S will be a, store will be a separate entity anyway, so you would keep that separate, okay.
Just to show the board that there is, it is currently, it's two separate uses, or two separate units
Mm-hmm.
within the building.
Okay.
The only, the only thing that's really needed to do is this eight-foot wall that they opened up when they put the lottery store in there, and when they opened that up, you can't close it back up without going to the board, basically.
So until two thousand thirteen, we have that wall closed and closed. The unit was also. The unit was also rented to the clothing store.
Yeah.
But two thousand thirteen, they back end the unit. So at that time, I put on for rent, but I was not getting any, like, uh.
Customers.
Customers, so I thought that let's just make, oh, use that space as a, for the store. So we're still using as the, um, putting the screens and just the storage and kind of thing.
So, um, um. Confused about the wall. Okay, so, did you have to get a permit to take the wall down?
Yes.
But not from planning, just from the building inspector. But now the building inspector said that we have to approve the wall going back.
Correct. That correct. Well, that's another business going in.
Change of use, maybe.
Change, it's, it's a separate entity, which would probably require. You know, you put UPS store in, that's a busy place, maybe a couple of weeks during, during the Christmas time rush or things like that. Other than that, it's not gonna be a very happening place.
Okay.
And, uh, but it still requires coming back before the board.
Does the board have any other questions? Public comment. Cindy.
Hi, Cindy King again. Um, I wanna, I'm speaking up again, another business I'm in favor of. I know this family has been trying to figure out additional business services that they could offer so that they could increase their, uh, business revenue, of course. But, um, I've been a customer of UPS stores in the region, uh, for, for many years. There's a lot of benefits to UPS store. But the, the issue, um, one issue is putting a UPS store in Townsend is excellent, not just for Townsend, but for the region. The closest UPS stores to us are two in Nashville and one in Westport. I don't even know where the next.
One in Pittsburgh.
Oh, I didn't even know that.
But still.
I don't know if that's close. The John Fitch Highway one that was there, I don't think it's there anymore.
I think you're right. I think you're right.
But Nashville Street in Raminster, I think that one is still there.
Yeah, yeah, that's a big.
Uh, one ninety.
Yeah. More beneath the railroad ridge.
Yeah, I don't know, but that's still there.
No, they're still there.
Yeah, I think that's still there. I go there and I'm married.
But even so.
You gotta hike. You gotta, you gotta travel. You gotta travel.
Exactly, I mean, but, but to have it in Townsend, there's a lot of people that use a UPS store and I, I, I mean, I, I support the, the business and I, I don't wanna go against what they've already presented. But I disagree with the, I think you're underestimating the number of customers you're gonna get by a lot. I almost think that you could get away with, don't go too crazy with this wall. Cuz I really think that you benefit from the whole building being UPS because of the, the number of packages. People who have businesses in their homes, they need to have a, a, a business address.
Yeah, but you have a lot of stuff getting shipped to the, the post office as well.
Continuously throughout the year. Yes, Christmas is a crazy time. But throughout the year, there's businesses and people in the area, not just Townsend, Pepperell, Groton. Just over the neighborhood, forty-eight, they don't want both the Nashville and Wunenburg, and they're gonna come to the Townsend area. And the people get, they're, they're gonna have a mailbox service. So people can get, it's a mail drop, like mailbox, et cetera. Only UPS has a really excellent mail service. But they also, you get your packages delivered. People that don't want packages put on, you know, for the port pirates. They're gonna rent a box at the UPS store and the packages can be delivered. That's something UPS does not offer. So people will have their packages brought in there, so they're gonna have storage space for all these people that leave their packages for five, five, six days before they pick them up. But it's, it's a really happen, it is a happening place. And I, I think it's good, it's good for the community, it's good for the region to have that UPS store here, and I also think it's good for them. But I, I mean it in a positive way to support that business. I think you're underestimating the number of customers you're gonna have. I think it's a really excellent thing, but I think in the future, be prepared to consider getting rid of the convenience store.
Maybe they, maybe they wanna come back here, maybe they should.
One thing at a time.
I'm just saying, it's a really good, and I, and I mean it in a positive way, not to scare anybody off on that business going in now. But it's, I, it's a good, it is a good.
All right, thank you, Cindy. Mary Jane?
Uh, yeah, hi, I'm Mary Jane Churchill, nine two nine three. I just, I, I'm from the Historic District Commission, and I just want to, um, enter these documents because there was some issue if the property was in Historic District or not. So I just wanna confirm that it is, and I have the original, um, creation of the district with the map.
Okay.
So just wanna enter it, just so we design the same page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you for doing that. So, um, any other comments in the public?
I, I, I'm John Kamo from New Torres Lane, Townsend. Uh, I generally frequent, say, have, well, maybe I have a couple times a year go to the UPS store in the Drumhill, uh, Rotary in Chelmsford. It would be great to have one in Townsend. I'd be, I'm not an everyday customer, but an occasional customer. Uh, it just seems to be a good thing, pull an occasional person from Pepperell and Ashby into town, kind of diversify, um, the traffic.
Can get a Starbucks. They get a Starbucks.
Okay.
Uh, and I, I, you know, when I go to the, the store in, uh, the Drumhill on, unless it's Christmas, I go there and there's maybe one person in line ahead of me. Maybe no one. Uh, so it's not thousands of people all the time. When I go there, I'll spend like either minute and a half there, or I have to pack something up, like seven minutes. So, but I'm in favor. I think it's a delightful idea.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, well, I worked UPS for twenty years.
Okay.
I told you that's a funny, I know blocks is, in fact, there's one up on Con Ave and Breiki. Maybe you have a dozen parking spots, but there's a line of stores, probably seven stores there, just a dozen parking spaces. They never had any problems with, uh, volume, and there's no other place to park.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
Across two colleges across the street, St. John's, Seventh Avenue, it's here, it's just that little block. They do a hell of a business, and it's never congested.
Oh, thank you for your comment.
Yeah, I raised, I've lived in West Towns and I've been here thirty-five years, so I, I think it's a wonderful idea. I, I know the family for quite a while and, uh, they're they're really kind, these people, and they're good business people, so I support it. I hope it comes here.
Okay, I don't think because of the late, um, submission of this and not you know, gone through everything, and now with that historic comment, that we can make a decision tonight. But I certainly believe we can continue, do you think to the eighteen? I mean, we can do the eighteenth or the twelfth, what do you think?
I don't, it's not too, too complicated.
It's, the only thing that was added to that plan is the legend up on the right hand, upper right hand corner. That's, that's what was missing. I'm sorry, yeah.
The board doesn't make the terminations, um, on the bylaw, basically. And, um, I did put it in my staff review that need to determine whether or not, um, but uh, well, we're, well, there's a couple of items in the bylaw. The particular access to the site shall be arranged to avoid traffic use of local residential streets situated in or ordered by residential district. There's a number of items that the board should actually review, um, that weren't going at a Scott level, and it's kind of a board decision. Yes, so, so those are things that you should discuss before you, but don't have any, uh, take, take action on this. You have to determine, uh, whether the parking, that the proposed parking plan is adequate. Because it's not, they're not providing ten spaces. They're providing eight.
So, yeah, on the lot, it's eight space, but, uh, on the Brookline Street, there are two space on our side and there are plenty of spaces.
Kevin, Kevin did mention that, um.
This is the municipal parking.
Yeah, the municipal parking within a hundred yards can be.
Hundred feet.
Or a hundred feet, sorry.
Yeah, and you have two, you actually have two, you, you probably have ten, right, yeah, sort of within a hundred feet.
Typically, a site plan would show.
There is a head again.
Close conditions, and there's no close conditions on that site plan. It's simply existing. That's why the board would need to go through and make those determinations, um.
Okay.
Number four, access to our way shall be of a design and have sufficient passing to avoid queuing of entering vehicles on any street. That's unknown, um.
Well, that's existing.
Determinations about those five.
It's been existing for fifty years.
How would that apply if, if, if that is already existing?
The proposal is an increase in use, but it requires more parking. And with more parking requirements, it, it requires more analysis. In terms of queuing, traffic on Main Street, and volume, similar to eighteen Main Street. So if they would address those, I think like even a statement about those, you know, board would it would leave the, the board to make a determination on or by them. It's in the site plan review bylaw. It's, it's right out of the bylaw.
Okay.
I can't make those determinations, so.
No, personally, I mean, we had a chance when you came and visited us for more of an informal meeting, uh, earlier this year, and we, we did I, I can't remember where you went at that point. So it probably would be smart to push it just so we have a chance to talk to you guys about it. But I do remember talking about the parking requirements and thinking about it and having the chance to drive by and say, man, it'd be really nice to have a UPS store here. Um, you know. It's a, it's a very tight, you know, I don't think, I don't foresee the, you know, the perfect arrangement of things. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with it is as it is and the fact that they had two businesses there previously. I do think there's gonna be a lot more traffic, but I also think, you know, you're not really going in there to chit chat. You're going in and out. So, uh, I feel okay with it, but I, I don't mind if we push it to another meeting to, to have more dialogue on it.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I share your comments. I'm comfortable with what I've seen here.
Yeah.
So.
Um, actually, you said you work for UPS and you pick up packages, deliver them, et cetera?
Forty years.
And, and so at a, at a UPS store, how often do you, you come in and pick up packages or?
Every day.
Once a day?
Yeah, you go there, I went there at night.
I think the situation here would probably be late afternoon, late afternoon, they back up in the rear of the building. And, and take the packages out. So it's probably the delivery truck that delivers to Townsend. When he's all done delivering to Townsend, he's going back to the depot yard. They probably swing in there and grab, grab, I'm assuming. The same UPS truck that delivers to Townsend backs in the back door, chucks two, three boxes in, whatever he's got and.
So this really though isn't about the delivery people. This is more about I need to mail a package and I wanna do it through UPS. Or I'm returning stuff and I have to return it via UPS. So I, as a customer, just come and drop it off there in town, which is more convenient for me than going to lemon.
Probably pay you six bucks and out the door you go. I don't, I don't know what's.
I think his question is related to UPS truck, right?
Yeah, so if they're pulling back, then that's.
Yeah, we have the back door.
Yeah, the trucks aren't gonna take up, the trucks aren't gonna be parked out in front of them.
When you go in the back of the building, just for trying to picture this, when you go in the back of the building, would you have a delivery truck back there that would then drop off in the back?
A van would pull right up along the Methodist Church, I'm assuming, or pull in and it would back right in.
Okay, so you have, this is, this says paid parking.
Right.
That is the back.
Yep. We have that tour here.
This is what I'm assuming. You know, so if it's coming in this way, it's probably gonna, probably gonna, yeah, no, probably gonna pull in here, and back in here. If it's coming from this way, probably gonna pull in back and just go right out onto the, right out onto the road. Or, yeah, no, I don't know which way it's gonna go. It's probably gonna be a delivery to regular UPS, like drops the stuff off at your place. At the end of the day, on his way back to Chelmsford or wherever they are, he'll park the empty, he'll back down.
That'd be a little front event.
And if you have best management.
Yeah, house, right.
You're gonna have everybody deliver. You're gonna have FedEx deliver, the post office is gonna deliver, Amazon truck is gonna go in and deliver, but they cannot go in there.
Yeah, I got. Just Amazon send stuff, UPS.
They're gonna, people have mailboxes at the UPS store that they're gonna be renting and they're gonna be picking up. And then plus, people are gonna be returning through UPS, Amazon factory, so the Amazon is gonna go there once a day, at least once, well, once a day. To do the FedEx, if you rent a mailbox, then.
So we have Amazon boxes at our store currently also, but I don't see any increase in traffic or any congestion or anything. We currently have the Amazon boxes in that second unit right now.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna, um, if, if you wanna hang in, fine, I'm gonna go through each one of the things that we need to address with the board right now.
Sure.
Okay? So these are all in reference to the bylaw of one forty-five dash forty-two. And one portion of it, one forty-five dash two. Inspector or planning board prior to filing the application for a new site plan review special permit. The project is not eligible for exemption under section B. Okay.
I think you just basically identified two things that we need to really focus on.
Yeah, I mean.
Uh, one was the parking.
Um, the requirements are, you know, they were, I haven't had a chance to review whether those have been addressed, so you can, you know, accept it as is, or you can go through it now, or however you.
So I had conversation with Jessica. And she mentioned only about the parking, and I still have the email as well from her.
Okay. Um, so I'm gonna go through the drawing requirements right now. Uh, site plan designs. Site design plan, subject to site plan review special permit, shall be prepared by a registered architect, landscaped or landscape architect, professional land surveyor, or professional engineer. Okay. I see, every place that there's a yes, I'm good, right? So, okay, so, um.
What's the scale? Cause you may need to request a waiver on the scale. It says it should be made of less than one inch equals twenty feet.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's less than that, or it's larger.
No, we've done that before.
Is that forty?
It's forty. Lance?
Yes, we have.
We've done that before.
We've done that waiver. All the time.
I would do that. You know, you have one inch equals ten, I mean.
That's ten scale. The last one is ten scale.
Well, usually we get twenty, cuz it's, cuz the bylaw I thought was one inch equals forty.
Well, this says right here, one inch equals twenty feet. It can be no less than one inch equals twenty feet.
And this is ten.
Yeah. You just vote to waive it, but technically you should.
Okay.
Cuz I can't.
I, okay, so I have the motion to waive the, uh, one inch equals twenty feet requirement. Is there a second? Oh, second. And there is a second. Any further discussion? Hearing saying none. Kara Hawkes says yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
Michael Scher, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Shepherd, yes. Okay, we waived that. Um, existing, uh, and shall show all existing pros counters, yes, existing, yes, structures, yes. Uh, parking spaces nine, radius of project not shown on plans. This is nine, spaces provided on plans. Um, are we good with the nine? Knowing this, this is on the plan, this is not what's accessible to the building.
Is the plan showing nine spaces?
Eight. Why did I count wrong?
Yeah, but they should show it on the plan.
There's eight.
There's eight.
There's eight, there's two, the.
So you could generally vote, um, you know, a finding that the planning board finds the, you know, the parking spaces are suitable for the, you know, some sort of wording that you're comfortable with that and vote on it.
I'll, I'll make a motion that eight parking spaces that are provided in the drawing, um, are appropriate with the planned use. Second.
Carol Hawes says yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
Pecan witch, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Shepherd, yes. If there was no further discussion. They jumped right into it, so, yeah. Okay, so that's the spaces. Um, service areas facilities for service refuge not shown on plan.
So I don't know what service areas means, but you don't have your dumpster shown on there. Um, obviously they don't need facilities for sewage, but I don't know what they mean by service areas in the by law. But there is no dumpster or disposal shown on there, so.
Do, do you have a dumpster at the building?
It's existing, it's out back.
And it's existing.
It's in the rear and it's existing. It's been there for years. It's just not, they didn't show it.
Are, are we good with knowing that there is a dumpster there, but it's not shown on plan?
Yes.
So, please accept. For the board, please accept that. That there, the dumpster that is at the facility is not shown on the presented plan. And we accept that.
So move. Need a vote?
Okay, yeah, Andrew made motion.
Oh, seconded.
Carol seconded. Any further discussion?
Carol Hawes says yes.
Okay.
Lance McNally, yes.
Pecan witch, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Shepherd, yes. Okay, um. Let's see, other words. Granite curving and cone, retaining wall cone, pad cone, construction, I think that is. Oh, concrete, sorry. Pad overhang are provided on the plan. Okay. Um, the concrete pad walkway with overhang shown on plan and lighting, lighting is not shown. Um.
Both existing and proposed. I don't know.
Are you doing it just on lighting?
No, it's, everything is for two units right now. So there is, there will be no additional lighting outside.
I think this means outside.
Yes, no outside.
Okay, there will be none.
The, the wiring there now, that, that's existing, there's no, there's no proposed addition to that.
And that's not on twenty-four seven?
No, no.
Um.
I, I was just saying that if you, if you look at what they're, they're doing is they're just closing an eight foot area where there's already a lot of existing stuff, so.
Yeah, the exterior, yeah.
I mean, I think the main ones were parking spots and traffic.
Um, okay, so that's, that's the end of the.
The map scale was actually, uh, oh, sorry, the, uh, locust map was actually provided on the revision. I saw that. Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, so, um, would it be appropriate to have a motion that says the board accepts the drawing? Ex- accepts the drawing as is?
Oh, yeah.
I see a motion.
Make, I'll make a motion to accept the drawing as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Carol Hawes says yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
Pecan witch, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Shepherd, yes. That's that. Okay, can I just go on to this one?
Oh, I think, I don't think there was anything else in it. You already addressed, we don't need the waiver. You addressed the front.
We have to, we haven't addressed traffic.
Oh, sorry, yeah. You could do as general, again, a general motion, but.
I would like to make a motion that, uh, basically we have an existing two businesses and that we don't see any significant increase in traffic.
I second that.
And so that was passed and seconded, okay? And we accept. Man, yes, yes.
I make a, well, we need to vote on the traffic.
Well, I know the everything. Okay, we're voting on the traffic. We accept it. Carol Hawes says yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
Pecan witch, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Shepherd, yes.
Can I make the motion that we, um, approve, um, the, um, site plan?
Site plan review special permit. And please give the address and need.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the site plan review special permit on two forty-nine Main Street.
No, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Carol Hawes says yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
Pecan witch, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Shepherd, yes.
We're done.
Well, I make, I make a motion that, uh, we close the public hearing.
Oh, you can do that.
And I'll second it.
Carol's got it.
And now we need to vote.
Carol Hawes says yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
Pecan witch, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Shepherd, yes.
This is how government should work. Very nice to meet you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So what I'm gonna do now is I'm.
I'm just trying to help people.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Hey, John. Good on you.
Oh, Jesus, I can't even find three people. Townsend can't even find three people. You're never gonna get five people. You know what it's, uh, you know what it is?
So I can give you the decision, guys, if you all want to sign that. Or if you wanna just have a case in it, you can do that if you're around.
Well, I, I, I would like to make a motion that. The chair can sign for the board on the decision that Beth is going to prepare. Thank you.
Can I?
My second.
I second.
Patrick's got it.
Okay.
No, I just give it to Patrick.
Carol Hawes says yes.
I'm gonna share the seconds.
All right. The chairman will sign once it's ready. Thank you to the board members. Um. So. I think we did a lot today. Um, the next item on the agenda would be three point two, planning board regulations review one seventy-five dash fourteen. Plans for definitive subdivision one seventy-five dash fifteen, um, required subdivisions for definitive. Did you say you did some?
Well, no, I mean, I, uh, no, I, I read them, but I didn't nearly, I didn't have any comments. I didn't have any changes.
Okay, Lance.
Um, yeah, I reviewed them, um. Uh, gosh, the only comment that I think was, um, substantial, I just wanted to run it by Beth, was shouldn't under the general provisions where plans for definitive subdivision shall contain the following, do we want to add wetlands to that?
Uh, you don't have to show me this sentence. It's in the regulations, one seventy-five.
Fourteen, and they have a cover sheet, a vicinity map, a contour map.
Yeah.
A, a primary conservation area map, a conventional layout plan, a soil test map.
Isn't that the conservation area? Would that be?
I mean, I just thought to show wetlands would be more specific.
Yeah, yeah, um, you know, I don't know if that's required now.
I know in an A and R, we have to, they have to show wetlands. And, and where it becomes a requirement is that the wetlands are in fact subtracted from the land area.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that change. It's easy enough.
Um. And, and I can send you this, and the other comment that I had was when we use acronyms like N P D E S and O S P D.
Yeah.
It would be nice that the first time we use it, we spell it out and then in parentheses.
Okay.
Say what it stands for.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, we talked about that before.
Yeah, and so, you know, um, there was the, um, N P D E S. Um. O S P D, O S M D. Were the three that I saw.
Okay, yeah. So that's in the rise, um, or I'll make sure. It may have been spelled out earlier. You know, I mean, you're coming in starting at one seventy-five fourteen.
But still, I think it's good maybe within each section to do it.
Sounds good.
Oh, so, on your wetlands, would this cover your wetland map?
When I looked at it, um. I, I looked at that and to me that it just said the primary conservation area map.
Oh, paragraph D.
Primary conservation area?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it says, shall show in appropriate colors all perennial streams, bodies of waters, wetlands, floodplains, wellhead protection areas. Or for zones, areas of.
Yeah, I saw that, um.
So if it's in there, then you don't want to be.
We don't want to be redundant.
Okay, fine, I agree. All right.
I mean.
All right.
Yeah.
All right.
Simpler is better.
All right, so I'll just have the abbreviation spelled out.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that.
Looks like paragraph D covers wetlands too.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, we can, that will probably keep staying on our list until we prove.
On the regulation.
Yeah.
I.
Or are we going on to another regulation after this?
Well, um, there were two of them, one seventy-five fifteen and one seventy-five.
So, so on fourteen, could I make a motion that we prove it conditionally based upon spelling out the acronym so we don't have to bring it back?
Sure.
All right, so I ma- I make a motion that the board conditionally approves one seventy-five fourteen with having acronyms spelled out at least once. Um, before use.
I second that.
And Carol Hawes says yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
Pecan witch, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Shepherd, yes. You're fine, thank you guys. Love it. Um, can I go on to Andrew in correspondence?
Um, no, no, no. Seventy-five fifteen?
I had no comments on one seventy-five fifteen.
No comments. Did anyone, do we want to approve it?
I make a motion that we approve one seventy-five fifteen as presented to us.
And I'll second it.
No further discussion?
Um, Carol Hawes says yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
I didn't read fifteen, so abstain. Abstain.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Shepherd, yes. Okay, you can add something else next time. Just let us know ahead. Okay, Andrew, please, uh, correspondence.
Yes. Correspondence, uh, first, we have four point one land removal from chapter sixty-one B. Parcel ID seventeen dash ten dash zero, twenty-seven Bayberry Hill Road. This is from the law offices of Janelis and Ward.
John.
Jelineus and Ward, L L P, one oh six Miriam Abbott, Leominster. Uh, to the town of Townsend, referring to, um, the former Virginia Welch property, twenty-seven Bayberry Hill Road. Dear board, please be advised that I represent the estate of Virginia F Welch, who was the surviving owner of the above parcel, who sold the lot where the home exists and intends on selling the two remaining parcels and removing all of the land from chapter sixty-one B classification. While we are unsure of the actual proposed use of the vacant lots upon the sale, seller does anticipate that it is for the construction, not single family residence. I am attaching to this letter of intent the executed purchase and sale agreement, which I certify is a true and accurate copy, the assessor's map which shows this parcel and its acreage as assessed. Thank you for expeditiously reviewing this matter under the provisions of M G L sixty-one B and the exercise of your right of first refusal. Very truly yours, Robert J. Meyer, Myers.
So we have to go on to the town?
No. It's, it's being taken out of sixty-one B and sold to someone.
And you have a right, and the town has a right of first refusal, right? So you can probably.
Well, that's what I heard.
Discuss that amongst yourselves and then give a vote.
What is sixty-one B?
Uh, it's chapter four, so they get four.
Tax, a tax break?
Yeah, right. But then when it's taken out, um, I believe they still have to pay the past five years.
It's kind of like curtsied in the interim.
Yes, yes.
So this is.
Is it a large parcel?
Well, it must be, but.
I don't know if it's too crazy.
I don't know.
I remember it being a hot sale from the young kids in town I talked to looking for parcels. Went pretty quick. I, I don't, I would as, I don't, I would assume, I don't know, I didn't, it didn't say anywhere where I could see what the acreage was. If I really wanted to figure out what size it was, I'd have to go to the.
Oh.
Um, the, you know, South Middlesex deeds or whatever, yeah.
But I assume that it's, it's probably two acres or, you know, two to three acres for a house lot.
Sure.
And it was also, I think, uh, proposed sale price was a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah. I guess.
So we are able to.
But he's sending this to the town of Townsend.
It's already been sold, so.
Yes, to the select board, um, conservation commission, the planning board, and the assessor.
There's a shred of refusal to it.
I don't think, I don't think it's been sold. I think a deposit's been put, well, there's a purchase and sale or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's more than one parcel.
What was the answer?
More than one purchase and sale.
You guys had A and R that, um.
Oh, I remember that meeting.
Yeah, what, what was this in?
No, same by it though.
Uh, in February, now there was A and R in the three lots. Backed up the A and R plan.
Well, I mean, the, uh. The town has given the right of first refusal.
Do you guys recall that? I know Carol signed it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I remember that A and R.
In February, yeah.
Yeah.
I think there's Robert and one other student.
So the planning board has an ability to prevent them from removing it from sixty-one B?
No.
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 So where are they asking?
I think, I don't know. I don't know that we have any role in this whatsoever, except that we already had a role in it when we approved the A and R. Which we really don't disapprove of A and Rs.
No.
Cause approvals aren't required. We only get notified. And I, and I mean, the town doesn't have the money to buy it. If, if they, the town has the right of first refusal, they don't have the money to buy it anyways. So.
So it's a simple, we do need more house lots, so. I'm not housing to be built in this town. A simple vote to take no action, that would be appropriate.
I make a motion that we take no action on, um.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven Bayberry Hill Road.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Security did the happy. Carol Hawes says yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
Pecan witch, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Shepherd, yes.
All right, four point two received from Townsend and Abboten Towns correspondences. Here we have the town of Pepperell Planning Board. This is a notice of special permit decision. Uh, the applicant was a James Basil on behalf of the Linda M. Lashkey Trust. Location of the property is seventy-three seventy-nine Main Street in Pepperell, map twenty-three, parcel slash lot one seventy dash zero. Let's see, relief requested, special permit decision granted. There are no other details about that. Town of Groton, the office of the planning board. Uh, site plan review Lawrence Academy gray building renovation. Uh, dated October twenty-first. Uh, this is a notice of a public hearing for Thursday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven fifteen P M in the Groton Town Hall to consider the site plan review application submitted by Lawrence Academy for renovation of the gray building on assessor's parcel. On assessor's parcel one sixteen dash ten. The proposed renovation will involve demolition and replacement of the existing dining hall wing. Along with site improvements, including the addition of new terraces on the front and rear of the existing building. Uh, copies are available in the planning board's office.
It's not a patio, it's a terrace.
It is a terrace. Uh, the town of Lunenburg, office of the planning board, notice of decision, uh. Thirteen thirty-five Mass Ave, site plan approval, change of use. Application for site plan approval, change of use. Under the section two fifty dash eight point four B six code, the town of Lunenburg. Submitted to the planning office on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Purpose, change of proposed use within the building. To a retail establishment, assessor's map number sixty-two, parcel number five. Applicant is a Dale Erskine, uh, thirteen thirty-one Mass Ave, Lunenburg, is also the property owner. Uh, Lunenburg Planning Board held and closed a public hearing on September twenty-third. The outcome, the planning board at a September twenty-third meeting voted to approve the site plan approval for change of use to retail. And granted all waivers requested. The site plan approval was endorsed by the planning board. On October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, and filed with the town clerks on October twenty-ninth. That is essentially it.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, received from the Tucut Regional Planning Commission and other agencies that just stuck that in our portal or.
I don't think we have anything with the time, I think we say.
And then the education and training, that's just standard to have for you guys in the portal. And then our next meeting is November eighteen and December ninth. If there's no other business to come before this meeting, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, seconded.
Eight forty-four PM.
Oh, Carol Hawkes says yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
Pecan Ultra, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Shepherd, yes, no one objected. Thank you very much.